To win.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. I have a couple announcements and updates tonight. I wanted to start with a brief update on the status of the mayor's task force looking at the use of force policies within the police department. I gave an update at our last meeting, but I just wanted to bring everybody up to speed on that. A quick review for anyone who hadn't heard the prior update. The mayor signed President Barack Obama's mayor's pledge to review Samara Fell's use of force policies and also requested a review based on the eight can't wait guidelines. So there was a 15-member task force that was put together and the idea is to report back to the city council in open session for review and discussion by the whole community. The task force met so far on June 24th and then again on July 9th. The first meeting, the group got a chance to get to know each other a little bit and get an update from the police department and had a chance to do a little Q and A on a document the police department had put together regarding the use of force policies, which was also.
Thank you. I'd like to welcome everyone to the San Rafael City Council meeting of Monday, July 20th, 2020. We met in closed session and I'll ask the city attorney if there was any reportable action.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. No reportable action was taken in closed session.
Thank you so much for that. Now, roll call. I'm city attorney, I mean, city clerk.
Hi, Councilmember Bushy.
Present.
Vice Mayor Colin.
Present.
Councilmember Gamblin.
Present.
Councilmember McCullough.
Present.
Mayor Phillips.
Present. We are all here and I'd like the city clerk to address how the public can comment during this evening.
Thank you. This meeting is being streamed live to YouTube where viewers can provide comments in the live chat, or they're welcome to attend by telephone by calling 669-900-9128 with the meeting ID of 835-5946-7965. That telephone number is also on the bottom of our YouTube screen on the banner. If you're watching on YouTube and you wish to provide public comments on topics not on this evening's agenda, please submit your comments now and they'll be read into the record shortly. If you're participating over the telephone and you wish to provide public comments, please press *9 when the mayor opens the public comment period. When it's your time to speak, you'll hear a notification that you've been unmuted and you will have two minutes to provide your comments. If you're submitting comments through YouTube to be read aloud, please write "public comments" in caps, introduce yourself, and submit your comments. Please note that there is a character limit on YouTube, so you'll have to submit your comments in groupings. Additionally, if you're planning to speak to the city council on matters not on this evening's agenda, please submit your comments as soon as possible, now, because it'll be the next couple of items. If you've submitted comments prior to the meeting by email or letter, it has been forwarded to the city council and we've published it to the Agenda packet on our website. Thanks.
Thank you very much. We'll now have the city manager to report. Jim?
Thank you, Mayor and Council. I have a couple announcements and updates tonight. I wanted to start with a brief update on the status of the mayor's task force looking at the use of force policies within the police department. I gave an update at our last meeting, but I just wanted to bring everybody up to speed on that. A quick review for anyone who hadn't heard the prior update. The mayor signed President Barack Obama's mayor's pledge to review San Rafael's use of force policies and also requested a review based on the "it can't wait" guidelines. So there was a 15-member task force that was put together and the idea is to report back to the city council in open session for review and discussion by the whole community. The task force met so far on June 24th and then again on July 9th. The first meeting, the group got a chance to get to know each other a little bit and get an update from the police department and had a chance to do a little Q and A on a document the police department had put together regarding the use of force policies, which is also on our website. And there was some beginning discussion of the policies and the group wanted to review the information and come back and meet again. So we did reassemble on July 9th and the group reviewed the first set of kind of red line changes to our policies and got deeper into the policies and the intent behind them, which was a really good discussion. The discussion at that meeting spurred some additional changes that we're working on now adding to the policy. So both meetings were very well facilitated by Lorenzo Jones, who's created a meaningful process. Since those two meetings at the end of June and beginning of July, we've met with the San Rafael Police Association to keep our employees informed and involved. And as I mentioned, the next step would be to bring the results to a public meeting at the city council, which we're hoping to bring forward to you at your next meeting, the next regularly scheduled city council meeting, which is Monday, August 3rd. At our last city council meeting, I went into some detail on an upcoming process we're going to have on goals and objectives. I'll just briefly mention that when we go through that process, we look at all of the services and focus areas of all of our departments. And I gave some examples of how social and racial justice issues touch the police department, but touch every city department, just like they do other parts of life, like access to healthcare, access to education, employment laws, prosecution, sentencing practices, and so much more. So there is that process that's coming up, but I know that in addition to that process, that the council wants to have a particular focus in the coming months on police calls for service and exploring alternative means to better direct certain types of calls to assistance providers that are not sworn police officers. So this is something that we started talking about. The chief of police has been in favor of having this conversation since the first time it was raised and will be making that a top focus once the use of force policies and then those considerations have been completed. So it's kind of a next step, once the use of force policies are brought to the council for your input and acceptance, that we'll then move on to that next phase. We do have a webpage on this topic where you can learn more and comment. It's, if you, cityofsanfelp.org is our basic webpage. If you, the quickest way to get there, the shortcut, is if you go slash racial equity and then that will bring you to a page where you can, you could read what we've done so far and make comments. And then we're going to be updating the frequently asked questions as we get comments in to make sure that we're responding to people that have comments and questions about the process. So I'm going to move on to a coronavirus update and I'm going to try to just hit the highlights. It seems like the numbers and the stats are a little bit of a moving target because I looked at the coronavirus page for Marin County and has information that's a couple days old. The most recent information that was sent out was 2,288 total positive COVID-19 cases in Marin County since the beginning with 32 hospitalizations and 31 fatalities. We remain on the state's watch list. That's the list that we were added to at the beginning of this month. The California Department of Public Health has a list of these counties, which are the majority of them at this point, where the COVID-19 situation has changed significantly over time, such as a spike in either confirmed cases, hospitalizations, outbreaks in congregate settings, and/or an increase in community transmission in workplaces. So we expect, and the county health department expects, that we're going to be on this list for the foreseeable future as we continue to see a high number of positive cases, but that's something that's tracked on a daily basis. At the last council meeting, the mayor had asked me specifically to give a quick update on the Canal neighborhood and I did so. And I talked about some of these things. There's been a little bit more development in that neighborhood, so I wanted to make a particular focus tonight with a few points on that. But over the past few months, what had been going on in that particular neighborhood is that the city had been supporting the COVID response in many different ways. And some examples I think I gave was we have staff providing outreach at testing facilities and we've been managing traffic control and coordinating volunteers at the various food distribution sites and testing sites. Our community center in that neighborhood, the Borough Community Center, has been used as a temporary food distribution site. We partnered with county health to run a pilot program visiting grocery stores and key businesses in the canal to support them in implementing social distancing protocols. And we've had ongoing efforts to push out information and resources to the community. Even with all of that, which I think I mentioned at the last meeting, we are continuing to see a surge in positive cases. So a cross-jurisdictional team was recently put together to work with the county on making process and communication improvements. And there's been a lot happening over the past, say, week or two weeks on this topic. We've been meeting with key staff from the county that's been working on COVID response, visiting testing sites and reaching out to service providers in the canal to get a better sense of the needs on the ground. And the county's standing up a canal surge team this week, which will be made up of key county and city staff and local nonprofits, including the Canal Alliance. So we're excited to play a larger role in these collaborative efforts and see many areas in community outreach and communication, business support, and project coordination where we can leverage city staff skills and resources. So it's an area where we're putting a lot of focus because it's such an important area in our community and we're seeing a lot of positive cases there. Onto some broader but still related issues. Last week, the County Board of Supervisors and the Marin Community Foundation allocated $750,000 in additional funds for what they were calling disaster relief payments. But basically what that meant is that to help the most vulnerable community members and reduce the rate of spread by assisting with the ability for people to be able to quarantine or isolate, even if they have to miss work and miss out on income opportunities. So financially supporting people that would have to do that, that are most vulnerable populations and most at risk also of spreading the disease just based on essential work and things like that that they're practicing. So there was, there will be a more immediate focus on assisting families or groups of families that are living together very quickly, rather than waiting for each individual to get tested and get a positive result. The focus is going to be more on a positive test and the opportunities or ways that that person's interacting frequently with others and then getting assistance right away to those communities. There's going to be improvements also to testing itself. Tomorrow, the Board of Supervisors has an agenda item on their agenda to contract with a provider called Color Genetics that would add additional testing at the Civic Center. And it's an organization that has its own laboratory, so test results will be able to be distributed much more quickly. The county also has on their board agenda tomorrow an urgency ordinance to adopt an administrative citation process for violations of the county health order. So far, it's been, it hasn't been very flexible. It's been a misdemeanor and a large fine. And I think the idea is to have an administrative citation process that would fall under the civil rather than a criminal misdemeanor umbrella. So it would give the authority to the county and participating jurisdictions in Marin to issue a citation as low as $25. And the county's putting together a multi-jurisdictional task force that's going to focus primarily on business enforcement, where commercial fines start at $250. So you'll be hearing more about this. The board's going to be talking about it tomorrow and will make a determination on whether that's something that they'd like to put in place through this urgency ordinance, so it hasn't happened yet. But it's a topic of conversation for tomorrow at the board meeting. I bring it up tonight because it's an additional tool in the toolbox. So the preference still remains information and people wearing masks and abiding by the health orders. And when we see violations, the intent still is to educate people or hand them a mask. But having such an urgency ordinance would provide another tool in the toolbox in case something like an administrative citation would be appropriate. There is a county email address that's already been circulating, I think, for about the last couple weeks, which is people can report violations of a business and that's sipviolation@marincounty.org. So that would be standing for shelter in place, sipviolation@marincounty.org. And then the county's following up on those. So again, if the urgency ordinance is approved, that would be another means to follow up on reported violations, particularly if they're in a particular area. In other areas, our own Dining Under the Lights program that the San Rafael Business Improvement District has put together, the focus of that, as you know, is to help people get back to work and support our local businesses and employees. And we've closed, our part of it has been closing portions of Fourth Street to allow for physical distancing and allow people to spread out. What I wanted to bring up on that is that the program has been expanded to both Thursday nights and Friday nights at this point. It had been just Thursday nights for a while, so now it's both Thursday night and Friday night, so providing more opportunities to support our local downtown restaurants. I gave a pretty lengthy, so I'm not going to tonight, update at the last meeting on the COVID response to the San Quentin State Prison. So since that time, just briefly, the active positive cases in custody number has actually decreased a little bit, which is good. It seems to be leveling off somewhat. The alternative care site that the state had put together on the campus of the prison is going to be running for likely at least the next two months as needed. And as I think everyone understands at this point, there is certainly a significant impact on Marin County, but the facility itself is managed by the State of California Department of Corrections and Rehabilitation. And maybe the best place to find the most recent information on that is they've created a San Quentin State Prison response page at the CDCR website. So I checked that today and it's been recently updated and has the most recent information on there, both counts and also how the response is going at the prison. So again, some of the best things that our individual community members can do is to wear a mask, wear face covering anytime that you're outside of your home. Whether you're an employee or a customer, face coverings are required, both indoor and outdoor businesses. And it doesn't have to be a surgical mask. It can be something as simple as a bandana covering both the nose and mouth. But that's one of the main ways, I think, right now, that we're trying to make sure that people understand that they can play a part in bringing these numbers down countywide by doing that. So we continue many times a week, kind of pushing out more information as things change. Probably the next one will be tomorrow, once the Board of Supervisors has an action on the urgency ordinance that I mentioned. But you can sign up for those at cityofsanfelp.org/coronavirus and that's also where you can stay tuned to the most recent information on all the things that I mentioned tonight and new things as they arise on a daily basis. So thank you, Mayor and Council, for the opportunity to provide the updates and that concludes my report.
Thanks, Jim. Complete as usual and outstanding, I would suggest. The dining, I'm glad we're opening one more night. Enjoy the Thursday night. Have it one more night. So much the better. San Quentin, it's good for all of us to get the word out because quite frankly, today alone, not to mention all the prior days for the last two and a half weeks, today I received 14 emails regarding San Quentin. So it's still on a lot of people's minds and it's been a constant inflow. So I'm glad you pointed that out as well. I am curious about one thing if I could ask, and that is you made reference to Marin County and 31 individuals were hospitalized. But then you also said, you know, you said 32 are hospitalized, but there've been 31 deaths. Does that mean virtually everybody that goes to the hospital ends up dying?
Sorry, technical difficulty. I think the problem there is a cumulative versus a, at the moment. So right now, it's, there's been a cumulative 31 deaths and the hospital number was at the moment. Actually, that, and that information came out from the county this afternoon. If you go to the county's webpage, which was coronavirus.marinhhs.org/surveillance, it's still showing a little bit older data that has the current hospitalizations at 26 and that further breaks it down between community patients and San Quentin patients. So that's where you could find kind of the daily and that's just in the hospital at this time.
Okay.
No, by far, by far, people are absolutely recovering.
Well, I didn't pick up on the nuance and thanks for clarifying that point. Let's now turn to time for public expression and opportunity to address this on issues that are in your mind but not on our agenda this evening and certainly be interested in your input. And I'll ask our city clerk if there is any city public comment.
Yeah, if you're participating by telephone and you wish to speak, please press *9. And while I'm waiting for our public dispenser on the line to press *9, I'll also request that public comments be submitted through YouTube. And please note that when you're submitting those comments through YouTube, you do have to write public comment prior to your message and introduce yourself and we'll read it into the record as soon as it's received. I do have a caller. I'm going to get my timer ready. You'll have two minutes. And when you receive a notification that you've been unmuted, you're welcome to go ahead and begin speaking.
Hi, good evening. This is Mimi Willard calling. And I heard Jim's comments about the urgency ordinance tomorrow at the Board of Supervisors. And I just wanted to encourage you as council members, because you do have influence at the Board of Supervisors, to urge that we adopt a countywide 311 line so that anybody who witnesses any kind of violation that might merit possibly being followed up by somebody, whether it is business or not business, can call 311. It's really simple. Otherwise, what things, the way things now stand is that people have to remember sipviolation@marincounty.org, which is complicated and it only accepts reports about businesses. Otherwise, you have to figure out who's the jurisdiction and whether you should dial 911, which would not be a good idea, what's the, you know, what's the telephone number of, you know, whatever the jurisdiction is. And then, of course, we don't have any kind of coordinated collection of data. So the hope would be we get a 311 line like San Francisco, like Santa Clara and others and that the person answering that would decide if it's, needs urgent attention or not and figure out to whom to dispatch it. So I hope that you will advocate for that. I have been trying to get some traction on it, but don't really seem to get anywhere. So thank you for your help.
Thanks, Mimi, for the comments. Anyone else?
There are. The first comment, "My name is Vanessa Torres and I oppose the decision of keeping SROs because I have seen more peers than I can count really need services other than SROs, examples, mental counselors, et cetera. I have seen so many students need support other than SROs. I've talked with the therapists at Santa Fe High School. They have mentioned how overflowed they are with students. I was a student at Santa Fe High School until I recently graduated. I truly believe focus in student programs will help all students. Thank you." "My name is Alvira and I oppose the decision of keeping SROs. I believe we need more counselors, not police officers, in our schools. The data says it all." Next comments. "Thank you for sharing details about the use of force policy review. Happy at the leadership of San Rafael for spearheading this, as this is an important topic for the Marin community. Also happy to have this as a focus on the agenda. Looking forward to the outcomes and next steps." And we have some comments coming in right now. I'm going to wait for them all to be gathered in groups. Hello, my name is Zizali. "It would be a mistake to continue to support SROs. This only makes the school setting less friendly and uninviting. This only seems like a bully tactic. It would be great if you, instead, if instead you reinvest in student support services and more focus on the student first. This would make the school setting comfortable. Our environment can affect our focus. I have benefited from therapy and college prep programs." And I'm just checking on my call line. That concludes public comment for this evening.
Thank you. Thanks for the public input and I would suggest that the community refer to the most recent, as in today, grand jury summary of action that they took over this past year, including addressing the SRO issue and some of their observations. It might be of interest. Having said that, let's move on to the consent calendar of which we have six items. It'll be covered by a single motion unless someone wishes to have an item pulled and I'll ask at this point if there is anyone that wants to have an item pulled. I see none and therefore we'll turn to public comment with regard to this item. Any public input on the consent items before we take action?
If you are participating by telephone and you wish to provide public comments on an item on the consent calendar, please press *9 now. And additionally, if you were on YouTube, I ask that you please submit your comments.
And additionally, if you were on YouTube, I ask that you please submit your comments now and make sure you write public comment prior to your message and introduce yourself. And I'm gonna pause for about 10 seconds, Mr. Mayor, and just give people some time to type.
Sure, that'd be fun.
I see no callers, and there's no public comments related to the consent calendar. Thank you.
Which case we'll, excuse me, which case we'll close public comment, come back to council for comment or a motion with regard to these items. John, are you ready to make a motion?
Yeah, I move we approve the consent calendar.
Thank you, is there a second?
Second.
Second roll call, please.
Councilmember Bushing.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Collin.
Aye.
Councilmember Gamblin.
Aye.
Councilmember McCullough.
Aye.
Mayor Phillips.
I'm Mattercarries50, turn to public hearing, starting with nine-year, one-quarter percent transaction and use tax ballot measure. Presumably we have a staff report.
Yes, we do, thank you, Mayor, I'm just setting up here.
Thanks, Nadine.
All right. Good evening, Mayor and Councilmembers, the purpose of this report and presentation is to recommend that council adopt a resolution to place a nine-year, quarter percent sales tax measure on the ballot for November 3, 2020. As we've reported to you over the past several months, city funding has been greatly affected by the negative financial impacts of the COVID-19 pandemic. Staff still estimates that over a 16-month period, losses of approximately 11.8 million are expected, not to mention further recessionary times following. In order to counteract this, staff has been diligent in cutting costs. We've implemented the actions in the cost-cutting plan, which was presented on May 18 and adopted into the fiscal year 21 budget. This includes suspending or eliminating 23 regular positions and 100 temporary positions, reducing city workers' hours, which reduces open hours to the public by 13 days per year, canceling or deferring projects and programs, and delaying the maintenance of critical infrastructure that has already been deferred for many years. Additionally, prior to the pandemic, the city worked with an outside firm to create a 20-year forecasting model. The model presented a difficult financial period starting fiscal year 21 and throughout the next nine to 10 years. It showed in order to continue to balance the budget, staff would have to reduce expenses and generate additional revenues at the same time.
Yeah, actually, do you want to listen to this part?
Again, this was prior to the COVID-19 pandemic. As the city continues to attentively manage costs, this will not be enough to get us through the challenging times before us and expect it over the next several years. Staff believes the revenue generating initiative is necessary in order to maintain essential services, and we're recommending a nine-year, quarter percent sales tax. This tax would result in approximately 3.4 million of additional revenues per year, which is about 30.6 million over a nine-year period. So why this? Sorry, the PowerPoint went forward early, but why this? The reason for this revenue source over other options such as parcel tax and special taxes is due to a few key points. For a sales tax, the cost is spread across both residents and visitors, so those visiting who rely on the city's infrastructure and 911 emergency services can also share in the burden. The sales tax exempts groceries and prescription medicines, so it has a reduced effect on those who are on fixed incomes. This is a general tax and therefore is flexible and is intended for the use of uncertain and changing needs of the community. And it's also the last one-quarter percent of local sales tax available under the sales tax cap established in state law. We'll discuss this a little bit further in the next slide. The increased amounts to additional taxes paid by the consumer, who is the buyer, of 25 cents on $100 purchase. So as you can see, this is a pretty modest amount, and it's spread amongst tens of thousands of people, so it's very high volume and intended to be low cost. California, like the majority of all other states, has a sales and use tax. The sales and use tax rate for California is 7.25%, of which the city of San Rafael, like other municipalities, receives 1% of the state base rate. This is often referred to as the Bradley Burns Amount. On top of the base rate of 7.25%, there is an up to 2% transactions and use tax rate. This is for local jurisdictions. Of the 2% of our local rate, 1.75% has already been taken up, and that's presented in the staff report, if you'd like to look at that detail. So we only have a remaining 0.25%, which is available and can be swept up by agencies such as SMART, TAM, and the county, and others, if we don't move forward now. If the measure is placed on the ballot and passes, the sales tax rate would go from 9%, which it's currently at, to 9.25%, as it was in San Rafael prior to January 2017. So you can see, this is not the first time the city of San Rafael would have a rate of 9.25%, and in fact, approximately 150 incorporated cities in California currently have a sales tax rate of 9.25% or over, and more than 40 of them are in the immediate Bay Area. Should the measure be placed on the ballot and pass, the city would be able to bridge the gap for the next nine years, in which at that point in 2030, we expect to see an approximate 60% reduction in pension expenses. Priority services would continue as they currently operate, and over time, cuts implemented as a result of the COVID-19 pandemic can slowly be added back through a methodical and analytical process based on priorities and needs. An unsuccessful sales tax measure would result in further negative impacts to our businesses and residents in the areas of economic vitality, neighborhoods, and quality of life. To name just a few, residents and business owners could see an increase in emergency response times, a slowdown in removing barriers to affordable housing, delays in business and residential building and planning permits and review, so the overall process, the end of resident programs that are greatly appreciated, such as the sidewalk repair program, the elimination of certain recreation programs, reduced library hours, and reduced city maintenance of parks, streets, drainage, et cetera. And again, these impacts are listed, that are listed are only a few, and we have further documents that go into detail on that. So staff's recommended actions is that council adopt a resolution to add a nine-year, one-quarter percent transactions and use tax at the general municipal election to be held Tuesday, November 3, 2020, and direct the city attorney to prepare an impartial analysis of the measure. So I've made the presentation short so that we can open it up for questions and address any items that you may have.
Well, first, let me, let me thank you, I'm sure on behalf of the council for the fine report, both the written report that we have before us and your summary, if you will, I think it's well presented, I think it's made clear as to why it might benefit the city to go in this direction, for the reasons you cited clearly. So I appreciate and support this measure. I do think that the community, rather, we owe it to the community to give this option, because we know through surveys, et cetera, that the community is pleased, substantially pleased with the services the city is providing, and we also know that without this measure, we're gonna have to reduce those services, so to give the community the option of making this choice the level of service they wish to have in these ensuing years is important to each of us. So, thank you for the report and the suggestion recommendation, open to council comment and observations, starting with Vice Mayor Collin.
Thank you, Mayor, and this is for Nadine, and I agree, thank you for the good report. One of the questions I heard from the community was, why November? Given that we have the pandemic, why wouldn't we wait till March? So maybe you could speak to what it would look like if there were more than one potential tax measures that were greater than a quarter of a cent, like what would that look like? So let's say we decided, oh, we want to go for it in March, but someone else has already gotten there, what would be the hurdles we'd have to do at that time? Because I understand we'd have to increase the cap, but maybe you could speak to that.
Corey, you're absolutely right, we would have to increase the cap, and Charles, who was helping us with this tax measure, is on here, and Charles, I don't know if you'd rather answer this, but I see him joining.
Sure thing, I'm here if you'd like me to answer that, do you want me to take that, Nadine?
Yeah, go ahead, you explain it better.
Yeah, so there's a couple issues, one is if there were competition for that last quarter cent, the only way to increase the cap would be with special legislation, go through the legislature and be signed by the governor, and that would obviously take time, that wouldn't be in place for a 2021 election. Also, general taxes of this nature can only be placed on the ballot at the same time as city council election, so the November of the even-numbered years, so the next opportunity would not be until November 2022. The only way around that would be for the city to declare a fiscal emergency by unanimous vote in order to call a special election for a sales tax.
Thank you, that's good information.
John, I believe you have a question.
Yeah, thanks, Nadine, again, we heard this, a lot of this in the finance committee, so I really appreciate the work you've put into this. Just to refresh our memory, in terms of the additional quarter cent for the Measure E that we've been using to help fund our essential facilities, when does that expire?
Sure, so the additional Measure E percentage expires in 2034, so that full 0.75% will expire at that point.
So as of 2034, unless anything changes, our sales tax would be a full percent lower than it would be if we, if the public matches this measure, or only a half a percent less? Because this will expire in 2030, and then 2034 additionally, correct?
Yes, so it'll be a full 1% lower.
You're still muted, Gary.
I'm sorry, thank you. Any other questions before we go to public? Seeing none, any public comment?
If you are participating by telephone and you wish to speak, please press star nine now. Additionally, if you are participating on YouTube, I ask that you submit your comments now, writing public comment prior to your message and introducing yourself. And you see a caller on the line.
Hi, my name is Kixxu Cole. My name is Kixxu Cole, I live on San Rafael Hill.
Jason, sorry, I just muted you, you're gonna want to turn down the computer on your, the volume on your computer, so there's no feedback, and that way we'll be able to hear your comments.
No, no. Got it. Hi, my name is Kixxu Cole, I live on San Rafael Hill, I am also on the Board of Directors for Costs, and I am speaking for them, and these are our comments. All sales taxes are regressive and thus not viewed favorably by cost-sensitive tax criteria. COVID-19 has exacerbated this problem. Economic distress, particularly among low-wage workers, will become ever more acute if this tax is enacted. The tax polled right at the margin, about 54%, so it's not a slam dunk. Tax fatigue was a real problem throughout the state, it will only be worse in the November election, COVID or not. Polling found that the most support for the arguments of putting more money to, was to, for police and fire. That polling was done before George Floyd's murder. It may be time to rethink that approach, or at least repoll it. The split-role tax measure on the November ballot promises to put more money back to cities and in the same proportions as their share of property tax revenues. Won't that better cover the revenue losses if the measure passes? Tammy Union High School District last week reversed plans to put a supplemental parcel tax on the November ballot, citing concerns about the economic backdrop. Tammy Union already knows all too well about tax fatigue. Pensions are the underlying financial problems that are driving the need for additional revenues. The city has simply not taken the necessary steps over the last 10 years to fix this situation. In sum, tax measures, this tax measure has a good chance of failing. While there is financial urgency, we understand the budget deficit, cost is unlikely to support the measure. We don't have to decide now, but that's where our position is right now. Thank you.
Okay, and we do have public comments. Ari Stocking, Ari and Stocking, progressive tax measures would be a better choice, and think other measures should be aggressively pursued. And another 0.25% tax, staff says 0.25 on $100, but that is $500 on $20,000. Already charging 0.75 transaction tax, and one trans TAM SMART and 0.25 for parks. An agenda is also taxed for a lagoon, which seems to be, a entire city enjoyed park from the comments. We have unemployment, small bus, small business, and landlords using savings, and no money for the people. Council vote no on these taxes, help us. And that concludes public comment.
Thank you. Then let's come back to council for further discussion. I can't see everyone, I can see the council members, but Jim, do you wish to make a comment that looks like you might want to?
Yeah, Mayor, I just was wondering if you'd like staff to respond to some of the comments that were made from the public?
I think that would be an excellent idea, and...
Okay. So I'll start us off and then see if Nadine or Charles has anything to add. First of all, in meetings leading up to this meeting, the council has seen our COVID-19 economic recovery plan, and it goes into a lot of detail, it's on our website if anyone wants to take a look at it, that shows all the different cost reductions and expenditure reductions that the city's taking. So it's, this action is not in isolation, it's as part of an overall economic recovery plan. So there's been significant reductions to the organization, and then the council also asked us to look at new revenue possibilities. So again, this would be, as Nadine mentioned, a limited term, only of nine years and not in perpetuity. One of the questions that came up is, is find a different method other than a sales tax. One of the things about a sales tax is that it is, groceries and prescription medication are exempt, and we think that that's an important factor of this. And also, it's a consumption-based tax, so if someone is not consuming a lot of, a lot of goods that come with the transaction tax, then they're not paying it, and it's being spread out over visitors to San Rafael as well, anyone who's purchasing something here. When it comes to COVID-19 and the impact, I think that the, the fact that we're seeing almost a $9 million budget deficit in the fiscal year that we're in is based on the coronavirus, it's not based on anything else, because of the fact that we weren't projecting a budget deficit until such time that we are seeing these massive revenue reductions, because businesses are just not operating. So that's the, the main point, although one of the speakers brought up pensions, and I'd love to, to speak with them or anyone, because I think we have one of the best stories to tell on pensions of anywhere in Marin, at least, and probably beyond, because of the fact that we're not, we're not in Kelpers, we're in Marin County's system called MCARA. of the fact that we're not in Kelpers, we're in Marin County's system called MCARA. And we've been very aggressively, much faster than the other cities in California, mostly that are in Kelpers, paying down our unfunded liability. So the great story that we have to tell is that the bulk of most cities' unfunded liability is due to the Great Recession. We've been paying ours down a piece at a time, and it'll be fully paid off in fiscal year 2030/31. So that's a great story to tell, that that's, that big piece of unfunded liability will be gone at that point. In addition, that's when MCARA projects that our pension plan will be 100% funded at that time as well. So it's not that long off anymore. We're only talking about nine, 10 years before that takes place, which is one of the reasons why you're seeing this, not as an in-perpetuity tax, where it would just go on forever, but instead trying to be very strategic and make it fit into our overall budget and our financial projections. So I just wanted to respond to some of those things and make sure that people understood how aggressively the city's been paying down pensions, and how assertively we've been taking this financial situation. The $3.4 million would be very welcome. It doesn't match a $9 million budget deficit, but we're hopeful that that budget deficit decreases over time as businesses start to be able to reopen, and we can start looking at how to use these funds in ways beyond just maintaining our current services, but getting into new things that people would like us to be able to do as well. Thanks.
Well, thanks for, thanks for the clarification and the additional comments, particularly with regard to the pension. We know that backwards and forwards. We've been, quite frankly, dealing with this issue, not just the last several months, but over the last year and a half, dealing with the overall financial situation of the city. And it's amplified by the COVID situation that you've outlined, relating to sales tax, of course. So this is a long-thought-out process. It's not a knee-jerk by any means, and it is intended to mesh closely with our obligation, unfunded obligation of the pension plan in nine years. So it's, I think, a pretty well-thought-out plan. And like you, I would certainly welcome the opportunity to talk with, directly with COST folks. John and I and you made a Nadine presentation to the MNIJ on this matter, and I think that we made the points pretty explicit, and would be delighted, like I said, to discuss those points and others that might be on people's minds with regard to this measure, not just COST, but anyone else, but certainly to include. So I look forward to that discussion with three or four of you that are here tonight. So thanks, Jim, for that. Other comments by council members? Councilmember Gamblin, I believe.
Yeah, I just wanted to mention to anybody who's out there watching and listening, is the action that we're taking today is to give the voters of San Rafael a choice. The action the city council is taking today is not to put out another quarter cent sales tax to San Rafael. It's to give it back the choice to the people, to say whether or not they feel that the revenue that we need to keep the city services that they've become accustomed to is necessary. We've done a great job. Our finance team has put together all the resources and all the numbers, and anybody can come to our website and look at those, to see the position that we're in. We're completely transparent on this, and this is an option for the citizens to look at. And if they choose to support that, then it'll pass at the ballot box. If they choose not to, then it won't, and then we'll be back, trying to figure out what we need to do to keep the city running the way that everybody expected to do with less revenue. So I just want to make sure everybody knows that, you know, that's listening out there, that the action we're taking today is to put this to the vote of the people, which I think everybody wants.
Yeah, I think that's a point very well taken, John. Thanks for adding that important element. We are not passing a tax per se. We're giving the community the opportunity to make that decision. So thanks for amplifying that. Looking to see if there are any other comments, and I don't, maybe I've overlooked any comments. No? In which case, are we ready to go to a motion on this matter? A motion would be appropriate. Andrew?
Yes, I move that we adopt the resolution regarding the sales tax ballot measure.
And?
Second.
And moved and seconded. Roll call, please.
House Member Bushy?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Colin?
Aye.
Councilmember Gamblin?
Aye.
Councilmember McCullough?
Aye.
Mayor Phillips?
I, Madam Curious. Thank you, everyone. We'll now move on to under public hearing, item B, Bay Point Lagoon Assessment District. Who's going to report out on this, Jim?
I think we have, we have Talia Smith making this one.
Hi, Council. I'm just having an issue with my video. I don't know if you can hear me?
We can hear you, but I can't see you at this point.
All right, let me try one thing really fast. And if not, then I may just present without video. Okay, I'm going to go ahead and present without video. Can you hear me, Council? Mayor?
Yes, we can.
Yes.
Okay.
Thanks, Talia. Go right ahead, please.
Okay. Good evening. Can you see my slide?
Yes, yes, we can. Thank you.
So tonight, we have the public hearing on the Bay Point Lagoons Assessment District, as well as the Point San Pedro Assessment District, but we're going to start with the Bay Point Lagoons. The purpose of the public hearing per the State Streets and Highway Code is that, the following four sections that are part of the State Streets and Highway Code, and we initially announced this hearing at the June 15 city council meeting. So just some background on the Bay Point Lagoons Assessment District. It was formed in 1990 to protect and enhance wildlife habitat in the Bay Point Sponaker Lagoons, and it was formed in conjunction with the housing development in that area. Right here is a map of the Assessment District. You'll see the yellow boundary is the boundary of the Assessment District. That pond on the far right is actually private property, but is within the Assessment District. It's important to note that for this district, there are three dedicated funds. The first one is the Eradication of Exotic Plants Fund, the Environmental Monitoring Fund, and the Kays Stormwater Pump Station Fund. I'll start with the first one, which is the Eradication of Exotic Plants Fund. The HOA took over the maintenance of the waterfront in the mid-2000s, but it's important to note that public work staff still does perform occasional maintenance of the lagoon and the islands. This fund, as of June 30th, has approximately just under $40,000. The Environmental Monitoring Fund was actually set up to address the odor concern that many of the adjacent homeowners had in the area, and this fund in the past has been used to fund studies, to study the odor, to see what solutions might be possible to suppress that odor that comes from the lagoons, and particularly the warm summer months when the algae dries up. That fund has approximately $50,000, and Al Cornwall, the engineer, who does our engineers' report for this district each year, does believe that there will be a complete monitoring of the environmental health of the lagoons that will be needed in coming years. Finally, we have the Stormwater Pump Station Fund. It's important to note that this pump station is actually located outside the Assessment District. However, this district has been setting aside funds since 2006 to fund automated controls for this pump station, because it does actually regulate the water level in the lagoon, and this would really help with the odor from the lagoon. And this pump, this fund for the pump station has approximately $115,000 as of the end of fiscal year 1920. The assessment is $131.44 per parcel per year, and that has been unchanged since 1996. It's important to note that one resident has alleged recently that the Assessment District was approved only for the initial three years, so 1990, 91, and 92. However, the city attorney did provide a lengthy response to that resident that did not agree with the resident's contentions, that they believe that the formation language in the reports does not limit the district to three years, and that it should be the intention of the city in setting up the district in conjunction with the development was that it would be ongoing. And this assessment has been active since 1990, so that would be going on 30 years. At this time, the options are to conduct the public hearing and adopt the resolution, which would order the levy of assessments for the coming fiscal year, or you may decline to adopt the resolution, which would result in no assessments for the coming fiscal year. And that concludes my presentation for the Bay Point Lagoons Assessment District.
Question by council members?
No question.
Vice Mayor Colin?
Yep, thank you. Thank you, Talia, for that presentation. Sorry, we can't see you, but we can see the presentation just fine. My question to you is this. I know that the account is growing because of the assessment, and you indicated that money is going to go towards an automated, something automates it, right, that does the water level. So how much does that cost? Like, how many more years until there's enough money to put that instrument and do the work that the homeowners want?
That's a great question. So it actually, that project is currently in design, which, and it is projected to go into construction this coming fiscal year.
And what's the total cost on that? Like, are...
I believe the design plus construction is about, I have to double-check with the CIP, but it's about $150,000 or $160,000.
Okay, so almost there, but not quite yet. Okay. Thank you.
Other questions? Seeing none, seeing none, let's go to the public comment.
If you are participating by telephone and you wish to speak, please press star nine. And while I wait for participants to press star nine, I'll request that folks watching on YouTube submit their comments now and write "public comment" prior to their message. Talia?
There you are. Talia, hi.
I'm going to give it about 10 seconds. And Talia, just letting you know, there's a little bit of feedback while we wait for the people. Okay, I do see one person with their hand raised. Once you've received an notification you've been unmuted, you're welcome to go ahead and provide your two-minute comments. Unmuted, you're welcome to go ahead and provide your two-minute comments. I should also note, it would be better if you...
Yes, thank you.
You'll want to turn your...
Honorable Mayor Phillips, honorable Vice Mayor Colin, distinguished city council members. My name is John Voland. I'm the president of the Bay Point Lagoons Homeowners Association, and for nearly the past 20 years, have been a member of the Bay Point Lagoon Committee, during which time we have worked in close collaboration with the City of San Rafael Department of Public Works, most recently with Director Bill Guerin. Speaking as an individual homeowner, who has had numerous and frequent discussions with fellow residents of my community, I've been approached by only one person who is opposed to the very modest assessment intended to maintain the health and well-being of our lagoon ecosystem. The ongoing maintenance of the lagoon has most recently involved the use of a mechanized skimmer to remove an overgrowth of enormous mats of thick algae that grew to cover considerable portions of the lagoon. There was also a recent project undertaken to remove large, numerous invasive, non-native growths of pampas grass from the Three Islands. Projects still to be completed include the aeration of the lagoon and the refurbishment of the aging pump system. With these expenditures in mind, I speak in favor and strongly agree with the city council's decision to maintain the assessment at its present very modest cost of actually around $11 per month per homeowner, and I appreciate this opportunity to offer my support for the continuation of the Bay Point Lagoon Assessment District. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your comments, John. Anyone else?
Thank you very much.
Thank you for your comments, John. Anyone? Lindsay, you're muted. There you go.
Got me. There are no public comments through YouTube, and there are also no callers on the line who wish to speak. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. And we'll close public and come back for council deliberation or motion. Any comments? Which cases are a motion?
I move we adopt, I move we adopt the resolution.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Moved and seconded. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Bushy?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Colin?
Aye.
Councilmember Gamblin?
Aye.
Councilmember McCullough?
Aye.
Mayor Phillips?
I, Madam Curious 50. We'll turn to item C, Point San Pedro Road Median Landscaping Assessment District. Talia, is that you?
All right.
We see you. Thanks for joining.
I'm going to try this one more time. So I will go ahead and share my screen. All right, can you guys see this power? Hello?
Yes, we can.
Oh, perfect. Okay. So the second public hearing we have tonight is for the Point San Pedro Median Assessment District. So this is the same slide that you saw before for the Bay Point Lagoon Assessment District, so I won't go into details, but we did, again, notice that this public hearing will be taking place, we noticed, at the June 15 city council meeting. This district was formed in 2011 to generate revenues to reconstruct, repair, and maintain the medians along Point San Pedro Road. There are 29 in total, and they cross both into city and county properties. However, per the MOU and the establishment of the district, the city of San Rafael was designated as the lead agency. And so that, what that means is that we bring the engineers' report to our city council each year, even though within that report, we are assessing both city and county parcels. Here are just some Google Earth images to show you what those medians used to look like, and what they look like now, that there is an assessment district in place that is funding the ongoing maintenance of those medians. There are two components for this assessment each year. One is the capital debt service assessment, which is really paying off over time, that, you know, sizable $1.7 million cost of rehabbing the medians back in 2010, or 2011. And the other piece is the operations and maintenance assessment. And this piece of the assessment each year is what funds the ongoing costs for the districts. The assessment is increasing $2.91 over last year. That is the maximum allowable rate. So that is a 3% over the prior year. Each year, we are allowed to increase this assessment by either the greater of the local area CPI or 3%. And in this last year, 3% was the increase that we were allowed to apply to the district. I do want to point out that the reason that we continue to apply the maximum allowable rate is because our direct expenses are still not covered by what our revenues are. We're getting closer. We're getting closer here. We do have projected revenues of about $155,000, but our direct expenses remain at $170,000, which means we are using unbalance to make up the difference. We also do want to acknowledge that over the years, there have been maintenance issues that have come about through the district, and we have worked very closely with the road coalition, the Point San Pedro Road Coalition on those. So a huge thank you to both Jim Dixon and Kevin Heigert, who are always a pleasure to work with as our liaisons to the community. Some of the improvements that we've gone through in the last year was we brought CSW on board starting this last fiscal year, so this time last year. They have done some incredible work just cleaning up this district. We had a previous financial consultant on board that we had a lot of things to really work through and clean up. So it's been really terrific. We've doubled the maintenance this last year, and we've added additional literature. I do want to note that under Proposition 218, we are increasing the assessment, but I do want to note that under proposition 218, we are increasing the assessment, but because it's within the maximum allowable rate, we actually do not need to return to the voters, um, per proposition 218. Again, I just wanted to highlight the work that we do with both, uh, Kevin and Jim. They're wonderful to work with. They have served as our citizens oversight committee for the district and work really closely as well with our, our purse statement staff. So, um, once again, you have two options. Um, you can either conduct the public hearing and adopt the resolution, thus ordering the levy of assessments for the coming fiscal year, or not adopt the resolution, um, and not, and there will be no levy of assessments for the coming fiscal year.
Uh, thank you for your report, uh, Talia. I just have one question. Uh, under the list of expenses, one I didn't recognize was the county assessment of $8,000. What is that for?
So this is actually for, um, the collection of, um, the county charges a fee per parcel when they collect an assessment. So it's particularly high for this district just because there are so many parcels in the district. I believe there's, uh, actually, I'm gonna misspeak if I try to guess how many parcels are in the district, but there's a considerable number and it's far and away our largest district. Um, some of our other districts, like Bay Point, for instance, only has, um, you know, roughly 40 parcels in the district. Has several thousand.
So is that a, I don't know if it's fair to ask or not, but I will and you can say, you know, you don't know if you wish. But is that a fair assessment? I mean, $8,000 seems like quite a bit.
Uh, yes, there's also a caveat, which, um, we do as part of the, uh, general benefit contribution that is listed in the engineer's report. The county does essentially contribute a monetary amount back into the district that's capped at around 7,000. And the intent of that in originally setting up the district was essentially that they would contribute back almost the same amount that they charge, um, for the fee collection or the parcels in the district.
Okay, uh, there's probably a reason for that.
We see some of that, we see some of that fund back.
Other questions by council members? Um, Councilmember Bushy?
Uh, I just want to follow up. And I was going to ask that same question too. Talia, help me understand this. So, um, we're paying them $8,000 and then they pay us 7, $7,000?
Yeah, there's, um, per the MOU in forming the district, both the city and the county were set up to contribute an amount, um, each year. And so the city contributes our staff time in overseeing this district, which is equal to about $12,500 per year, all the different, um, folks in DPW that work on this district. And the county, um, contributes, it started at $6,000 in 2011 with a yearly percentage that it might increase. And so now it's up to around 7,500. Um, and it's either the, the lesser of that or, um, 37% of what the city contributes. It's a little bit, um, convoluted, but you are correct in your initial.
Now, now let me ask about another fee, um, the difference between the amount you're collecting and the actual cost. Is that being rolled into the capital or is that being absorbed by the city?
Um, it, there is actually a fund balance in the operations and maintenance fund and that comes from, there was a collection that started about a year and a half, two years before the maintenance was like in full steam. So we have been, uh, drawing on that fund balance for several years now. Um, but that is actually operations and maintenance fund balance that you're looking at.
Okay, so that it is brought up so that they, um, that the expenses are met?
Yeah, and they're projected to meet each other in the next few years, so.
Great, thank you.
Okay, thank you. I see no other questions, uh, so we'll therefore turn to the public for comment.
If you are, uh, calling in and you wish to speak, please press star nine. And if you're listening in on YouTube, if you could submit your comments now, and please write public comments prior to your comments. There are no callers on the line at all. So we'll have no one there and I'm just gonna give everyone a couple of seconds to go ahead and enter any YouTube comments. We do have one. My name is Kevin Hagerty and I am the chairman of the roadway committee for the Point San Pedro Road Coalition and urge you to support the recommended increase in fees in item 5C. And just gonna give a few more seconds. There are no more comments. That concludes the public comments.
Okay, and appreciate the, uh, the public input. Certainly, uh, back to council, close public, back to, uh, council for follow-up comments or questions. Seeing none, is there a motion with regard to this item?
Mr. Mayor, if, if I could, I'd like to, uh, just make the comment, and I think I make it every year. Um, and that is one to thank Jim and Kevin and others who are members of the Point San Pedro Road Coalition who have worked so closely with public works to make sure that this endeavor is successful. Um, it's been very cooperative and I think, uh, the result is residents along that corridor have benefited enormously. I certainly believe that and that's all I've heard from the various HOAs over the years. Uh, that's point number one. Point number two, more internally focused, goes to the financial status in the quarterly report that was part of the, uh, the, um, uh, consent agenda. And that is that this is the single best investment that the city's made in the time that I've been on the council, the nine years I've been on the council. With a 5.25% return on investment, the one point, I think it's 1.3 million that sits on our books as a receivable. It's the bond that we bought has proven to be a very good investment by both the community in terms of the, uh, infrastructure that's out along the roadway medians and by the city of San Rafael as a steward of its, um, treasury. So, uh, with that, unless other people have comments, I'm prepared to make the motion at the right time.
Excellent comment. I would encourage you to provide a motion.
Uh, then I move that we adopt the resolution.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Moved and seconded. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Bushy?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Colin?
Aye.
Councilmember Gamblin?
Aye.
Councilmember McCullough?
Aye.
Mayor Phillips?
Aye, the matter also carries five zero. Thanks, everybody. And glad you could join us, Talia.
Sorry about the technical difficulties.
Not, not a problem. We'll move on to the council members for re, uh, request for future agenda items. Are there any? I would be interested at a future date, uh, not necessarily next, but the future date on RPOs. I think there's a fair amount of, uh, community discussion and I think it would behoove us to, uh, be involved in that discussion. With that, uh, we'll move to San Rafael Successor Agency Consent Calendar. There is one item, which is a quarterly investment report. Uh, staff report, please.
This is just a consent calendar item.
Oh, your point well taken. Uh, any, uh, any comments by council members regarding this matter? Seeing none, we'll move to, uh, public. Any public comments?
If you are on the telephone and you wish to provide public comments, please press star nine. And if you are on YouTube and you'd like to provide public comments, please write public comment in advance of your comments and introduce yourself. We still have no callers and I'm gonna give people a little bit of time on YouTube.
Sure.
I see no comments on YouTube.
Okay, uh, thank you very much. Um, let's move, uh, the consent item. Is there a motion with regard to consent item?
So moved.
Thank you.
Second.
Second. Roll call, please.
Member Bushy?
Aye.
Vice Chair Colin?
Aye.
Member Gamblin?
Aye.
Member McCullough?
Aye.
Chair Phillips?
Aye, the matter carries, uh, five zero as well. And that concludes our meeting this evening. We are adjourned. Thanks, everybody. Good job.